I have you and Josh at the top and then the three of us yet again at the bottom. And I'm like a progressive commercial, I'm delayed.
It is July 13th at 7:00 PM. We will go ahead and get this meeting started. We have six board members present at the moment virtually, and please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we do have, before we approve the agenda tonight, Mr. Robinson is joining us tonight as Dr. Cobb's is not available this evening. Could you please explain to those that might be watching why we are choosing to meet virtually tonight and not there in person at the board office?
Yeah, we wanted to take a few minutes at the beginning of the meeting just to address the public. When we looked at the board agenda for tonight, there's some really important topics to discuss. And with the governor's executive order and expectation of wearing a mask, we were concerned about communication and ensuring that the public, especially those watching the livestream at home, would be able to understand completely what was being shared. And so that's why the decision tonight was made to host the meeting virtually. And hopefully it'll allow us to still have good discussion about the topics that are there and to conduct our meeting in a way that the public would be able to fully understand the various views of board members and the discussion items that are on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so with that, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
All right, that was moved, I believe, by Harold Wingard. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was seconded by Linda Alderman. We will go ahead and just do this one as a group. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
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 Any opposition, please say no. So that passes 6-0. And we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Robinson, is there anything that you would like to review for us on the consent agenda?
No, I would just mention to the board that the items that are on the consent agenda are normal items for this board meeting. The two contracts that are there, one of those is for a teacher of the visually impaired that we contract with another school district. We currently have about three students that access that service, so having a full-time teacher wouldn't be cost-effective. Those rates haven't changed, they're the same rates and conditions that we've had for the past few years. And the KDHE contract with Tiny K gives us the ability to continue to operate our infant toddler program and outlines the expectations that KDHE has for our program. The other thing that's on here are a long list of resolutions. This is a normal list of resolutions with no real changes to them from what the board has approved in previous years.
Okay, and before we go ahead and ask for a motion for the consent agenda, I just want to note, Mr. Cunningham has lost internet and is currently offline, so we will go ahead and proceed with just five board members present. Dean, if you see that he joins us back in and I don't notice that, would you please let me know?
Will do.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
It's moved by Linda Alderman, is there a second? I think Harold said second, but I couldn't quite hear him. Harold, did you speak to that? Okay, perfect, a seconded by Harold Wingard. We'll go through roll call vote. Linda Alderman, yes or no?
Yes.
Julie DiAndrio, yes. Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Linda Olmstead?
Yes.
Harold Wingard?
Yes.
Right, and that passes 5-0. So we are down, we have a couple of presentations tonight that we're not going to take any action on, but it is going to be some information that is presented. So first up is the presentation of Personnel Handbooks, the first read-through for that. And Mr. Robinson, if you please share with us.
Yeah, so this is the first read of our Personnel Handbook. Dr. Cobb's will ask for the board to take action on approving any changes to the handbooks at the next meeting. There were four handbooks in this agenda item. What I would tell you is both the Licensed Staff Handbook and Transportation Handbook saw no changes other than changing the date for the school year from last school year to this year. The Classified Staff Handbook, other than date changes, saw one change. There was an option in previous years for staff who did not use their leave. It gave them three different options. That used to be consistent with what our Certified Staff, the options that they had as well. Over the last few years with discretionary leave changes and other changes to our other personnel, it left our Classified Handbook as the only one still with that option, which becomes kind of a challenge for our business office to manage. And so what we were looking to do with that change was to simplify that and to roll any leftover leave in as, if I understood right, in as sick leave for the following year, so they're not losing that leave. It just takes away the multiple options that were there. So that's the only change to our Classified Handbook. Our Substitute Handbook, we tried to address one of the board concerns from last year with substitutes, and that had to do with how their day is structured. Some substitutes felt that they needed more time in the morning, some felt they needed more after-school. And so we tried to do a specify that right now it's an eight-hour contract day for subs, and to clarify that in the handbook, but to really leave it up to the substitute and the building principal to determine whether if they need to be there earlier in the morning and leave at dismissal, that they had the flexibility to make that adjustment on their own. But that's the only change to the Substitute Handbook. Do you have questions about any of the changes that have been proposed? Julie, I think you're muted.
Thank you, thank you for that sum up, so we appreciate it. And we'll go ahead and move on since there aren't any questions on that. Let's move on to Section 5.02, which is the Strategic Plan Changes.
And Chris, I'd welcome you back. The Strategic Plan, in June, we had our administrators go back through our Strategic Plan. Part of this was our annual review that was specified in the Strategic Plan when it was approved in the very first place. And part of this was due to the time off from school and really looking at the things that we would have been working on with our staff and whether or not the closure to school in the spring impacted those items. So I would highlight a few things for you. Rather than going through every change that's in there, one of the things we tried to specify where there were places in the Strategic Plan where we had separated out general education staff from title staff or special ed staff. As we went back through the Agenda, or through the Strategic Plan, we tried to move the majority of those to all teachers because we felt like the expectations that were there were not specific to any one group of teachers. They really needed to be things we were working on, potentially at different levels, but that we were addressing with all staff rather than individual staff. So we made changes to that. We did make a few changes just in the progression, you'll see that throughout the plan. We also had some things that were successes. Anything noted in green means our team, our administrative team, felt like we're not necessarily done with those items, but that we've seen significant progress within our buildings with those items. The other area for us to celebrate is a change in our graduation rate target in our Strategic Plan. This may be, we're still waiting for final calculations, but maybe the first time in over a decade that we'll see our graduation rate go over 90% or be right at 90%. So that's something to be really excited about. The previous Strategic Plan had 87% as the target, and the high school building leadership team has asked for that target to be moved to 90%. The other big things I would mention throughout it, when you get into Page 6, Goal 1 Indicator 2, we added a few things. We added an area there to focus on the partnership that Ottawa High School has begun to garner with FCDC and developing a workforce with our local businesses, that we wanted that addressed in our Strategic Plan, both so that it's an area of focus for our board as it comes up, but also as we look at how to allocate resources, that it's an area that we're emphasizing and need to continue to build on. On Goal 1 Indicator 3 on Page 9, initially with social-emotional development, we had indicated that we wanted to develop our own Boys Town-based social-emotional screener. That's something, the more we've learned about FastBridge and Sabers that we think would be work that our staff would put in that wouldn't be effective. We feel like there's already a tool built into the FastBridge system that we have been using and should continue to use. And so rather than focus on building a new tool, we focus more on how we're utilizing the data that we have, because we have data both from Sabers and FastBridge and also from our Boys Town consultants that are doing walkthroughs. And that's the data that really our buildings are using to drive what they're doing. And so we wanted that indicated in our Strategic Plan, that that was where we were guiding our work rather than having our counselors and social workers spend their time developing a new assessment tool. When we get to Goal 2, is really where we start to see some significant change to our plan. Originally, on Goal 2, the first two indicators, we had connected Ottawa Middle School and Ottawa High School. And one of the things we have stressed throughout is that this document needed to be fluid enough that it challenged our schools, but at the same time, we were able to adjust it based on the needs and the progress of our schools. And so at this time, we're recommending that we start to separate where Ottawa Middle School's focus is and where Ottawa's High School's focus is. And so what we've done at this point is Ottawa High School would continue to focus this following year on flexible scheduling, and would come back another year down the road and explore more of where to go with standard-based grading and standard-based classroom. The middle school would shift and continue their work with really looking at standard-based instruction and standard-based classroom. They've got several teachers that we will likely ask to come and present some information to the board at a later time that have been piloting some different things. And I would stress again, both for the public and for the board, the intention here is not to do away with a letter grade system, but really to look at how we're assessing learning in the classroom and making sure that all students are learning in our classrooms. So the separation here is more based on where those two schools had focused their time and where they've really seen some growth within their staff, and making sure that at this point, we're able to take advantage of that rather than pushing them to do both at the same time. When we know going into this year, we're going to have limited time for professional development and staff collaboration. This is probably the biggest change in our Strategic Plan. So do you have any questions about those items before I address the other minor changes that have been made? Harold, you're muted, but I could...
Okay, I have a question. I didn't want to interrupt anybody. When we adopted this, you know, we talked about standard-based grading, and we talked about it in elementary school, and then OMS and OHS, and it kind of said, well, we're focusing on elementary, but it really isn't rolling out. And you just kind of used that same terminology. But yet, when we talk about it outside of this context, it says, well, we refer back to the Strategic Plan, it's standard-based grading is in the Strategic Plan. So I just want to go in record of saying, I'm fine with standard-based grading being in elementary. I certainly do not support it in Ottawa High School. I don't think that, I'm not saying we don't evaluate how we achieve those goals. Maybe you're on the right track of saying, you use a nice term saying, standard-based grading, whatever you said, techniques, right? Or however you phrase them up and word them out. I just don't know that I'm a supporter of standard-based grading in the high school, and I don't know yet that I'm comfortable with being in the middle school. So I welcome the teachers coming forward and presenting that information because I'd like to know just how does that cross? You know what I mean? And I'm not saying I disagree with some of the principles being used. It just, how does that actually work? Whether the rubber meets the road, you know what I mean?
Yeah, Harold, I'm on the middle school psych council, and I can't remember the teacher's name, but he has worked really hard this last year to meld standard-based grading with the ABC grading, and has done an amazing job. And he is going to come and present to the board, I believe, and I think he'll understand it much better once he's, and feel better about it, once he's explained it to us.
Okay.
And Harold, I would echo what Linda said. I think your concerns are valid. I think when we start talking standard-based grading at middle school and high school, the biggest concern that parents and individuals in the community have is just what you said, it's losing the letter grade system. And I don't know that that's the direction we're headed at this time. Really, what we're looking at is incorporating some of the practices that elementary has utilized in standard-based classroom within the middle school. And really, right now, it's putting it back in the hands of teachers to drive the conversation and look at how it works. And I think it's Ryan Fullerton that Linda's talking to, has done some tremendous things with his team. We talked to him again last week at another meeting, and I think he will be more than willing to share later on. But he's done a great job of balancing the two, and I think that's something we would want the board to see more as to how it could look, both to answer questions for board members, but also for community members that may have similar questions or concerns.
I was, I'm sorry, I was trying to talk earlier, and I was on mute. What I wanted to say was that I also have heavy concerns about the standard-based grading. I have experienced it at the elementary this past year, and the district that my children attended prior to moving to Ottawa used it in their elementary too. So I've told Dr. Cobb several times, I was very excited when we moved here to learn that our elementary, at least the higher, like the fourth and fifth grade in the middle, or in the elementary, used the grade system instead of the standard-based grading. Because in this past year, my concerns were validated, and I do not feel like I have a good handle on where my child is really at going into middle school. And I'm very concerned about that. Even, I attended every parent-teacher conference, and it's still, I mean, I use the example of if my husband says he's on his way home, technically, he's progressing, but if he's still standing out in the parking lot talking to the guys, I can't expect him to reach home at the time that I'm expecting him, like by the end of the year or when that cutoff is. So the progressing really means nothing, and I feel it does not give the parents the information they really need.
Well, and it's interesting that you say that, because our feedback from many parents has been just the opposite, that they were unsure when their kid received a letter grade of a B or a C as to, you know, what did that mean? You know, does that, because it looks different in each classroom throughout our district. I think there's still a lot of work when you talk about what elementary has done with standard-based grading. I think there's still a lot of work in improving the implementation at this point. But I hear where you're coming from, and I'll make sure that Mrs. Bybee and our team take a look at how we're explaining those things to parents and how it's being explained to teachers to be able to implement it, and just making sure that we're making progress in year two of implementing the standard-based grading system compared to what we did in the first year.
Thank you. Thank you, Melidia and Harold, for your questions about the Strategic Plan. Do any other board members have any questions about this document? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Robinson. I do want to say I appreciate each year, whenever we bring this up, the way you use the highlighting to really show us where we are moving through it. It makes it very easy to understand, so I appreciate that. All right, so we are going to move on here to take some action on some items tonight. We first have Chromebook purchase. Mr. Grell, Dean, did you have anything that you would like to add to us before we talk about taking some action on the Chromebooks that you spoke with us about before?
The only thing I do want to address real quick is that we opted for the more expensive protective shell. And Melidia, I think you were there at the meeting when we actually had them, received them down here, so you got to actually see them firsthand. But I did bring them just in case. And the cheaper one truly is mostly plastic. Same vendor, they're both from Gumdrop, which is a reputable company, but this is 100% plastic. Whereas the upgraded version has rubber all the way around every single side. We currently have this one, we have no issues with it, we love it. And the fact that we have a whole fleet full of them, adding to that fleet with the exact same protection, I think it's a no-brainer for us for a little bit of extra cost. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is that the same thing that we were talking about, that you've dropped from the roof of OMS?
Sort of, that's the always-on. We will drop this one too if we have to. Give me the go-ahead, I'll go drop it off right now.
Nope, nope, I'm not saying anything, I'm just asking.
We did get eight responses to the Chromebook bid, but not all of them submitted bids. They just submitted no bids so they could be a part of the process and see what the market was doing. No one wanted to commit to a ship date. The ones that did said December, Christmas, 150 days from order date, that kind of idea. That's not to say they won't come quicker, but that's what they wanted to commit to in terms of a contractual obligation to deliver by that date. So not the greatest of great news, but news nonetheless. Any questions? Harold, you're muted, I think.
Yeah, I'm off mute, okay. I can now speak, okay. Where will these Chromebooks be placed when we do get them in 150 days or sooner? We'll put a red bow around them and we'll tuck them under somebody's tree. What tree are they going under?
These will be sixth graders and freshmen. So our eighth graders that left the middle school kept their devices. They'll start out high school with their old device, so they'll be good, they'll be ready to go. And as we get closer to December, we'll swap them out with brand-new ones. We have an inventory process that we can handle and control. And then the second piece of that will be our outgoing seniors this year. All of their devices have been cleaned, disinfected, repaired if necessary, and those will go to our incoming sixth graders. And then the rest will just filter out throughout the district. And then again, once we get our devices, sixth graders will have that same swap-out in the time in the classroom to do that.
Okay. And then elementary, just fine? I mean, we don't need any for elementary? I mean, like if you're in third, fourth, fifth, you're going to keep those? And then we got, if we need to go younger, we can get for younger, or how does that work?
So what we'll probably end up doing is bringing some of the fourth and fifth devices down because they are the full touchscreen tactile feedback device. It's going to be more friendly for those younger ages. And then we'll bring our Toshiba's, which, as we talked about, are end-of-life, but they still work for classroom work. We'll probably give those to our elementary and fill that building up. This bid does allow us to increase by, I think, 10% of the quantity if we ever decide to, at that same price for up to, I think it's a year. So if we have to expand, we can just give them a call and say, hey, that same price, we need the 10% more, and we can move forward with that.
Dean, didn't we, Dean, didn't we talk about maybe next year with the idea that I had pitched that we'd kind of start doubling up then?
Yep, next year is still the double-up plan, certainly pending whatever happens this year.
Okay, thank you, Dean.
I guess I've always said, and I want to keep on the record, that I've always said from senior on down, and I was trying to follow your logic, and I think your logic was fine, that, you know, it's the upper echelon of grades are going to be using more and more of these Chromebooks. So as you progress through, like you said, eighth to ninth, ninth to tenth, tenth to eleventh, and to senior, you're potentially asking more of your Chromebooks. So I think that the, in my opinion, the newer, more robust devices ought to go to those that are using the devices more. I think in the elementary, the same applies. I know as a little kid, as K1, 2, it's fun to push the buttons on the screen. However, if you're asking your fourth and fifth grader to do more and more and more, I would hate to pull those devices away from fourth and fifth. What I'd rather do is get the devices, even, I've heard of tablets for the K1, 2, or 3, if that's what we need to do. I'm not trying to push old Toshiba's on the K1, 2, or 3. I'm just thinking, if they need touchscreens, maybe we get them tablets or we get them their own touchscreens. I just hate to pull away from those and push down. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I think the challenge for us there would be making sure that, well, then the senior would have to have a new device every year as they come in and then roll back down. It'd be reverse, it'd be kind of hard to do. We like our four-year rotation because it's convenient and it matches well with our grades. But I certainly understand that as we start moving into the elementary and have the dedicated devices, we're going to have a purchase for the elementary, like we did when Sunflower opened, we had a dedicated purchase. It wasn't hand-me-down devices, these are, actually it was district-wide, fourth, fifth, these are your devices. We'll get there to where everyone has their new device, they're on a solid rotation. As Chris mentioned, we get down in the elementary, grade it for a dedicated device. We really need to get to that 5, 6, 7, 8 rotation, fifth through eighth, ninth through 12. That gets us our four years all the way through. But then our youngest, our youngest of our young are going to be the ones that we have to figure out the right device for. Is it a Chromebook? Is it a tablet? Is it something that doesn't exist yet? We don't know.
All right, well, thank you for your question, Harold. Does anyone else have any questions for Dean before we ask for some action?
And then the second piece of that will be our outgoing seniors this year. All of their devices have been cleaned, disinfected, repaired if necessary, and those will go to our incoming sixth graders. And then the rest will just filter out throughout the district. And then again, once we get our devices, sixth graders will have that same swap-out in the time in the classroom to do that.
Okay. And then elementary, just fine? I mean, we don't need any for elementary? I mean, like, if you're in third, fourth, fifth, you're going to keep those? And then we got, if we need to go younger, we can get for younger, or how does that work?
So what we'll probably end up doing is bringing some of the fourth and fifth devices down, because they are the full touchscreen tactile feedback device. It's going to be more friendly for those younger ages. And then we'll bring our Toshiba's, which, as we talked about, are end-of-life, but they still work for classroom work. We'll probably give those to our elementary and fill that building up. This bid does allow us to increase by, I think, 10% of the quantity if we ever decide to, at that same price for up to, I think it's a year. So if we have to expand, we can just give them a call and say, hey, that same price, we need the 10% more, and we can move forward with that.
Dean, didn't we talk about maybe next year with the idea that I had pitched that we'd kind of start doubling up then?
Yep. Next year is still the double-up plan, certainly pending whatever happens this year.
Okay. Thank you, Dean.
I guess I've always said, and I want to keep on the record, that I've always said from senior on down, and I was trying to follow your logic, and I think your logic was fine, that, you know, it's the upper echelon of grades are going to be using more and more of these Chromebooks. So as you progress through, like you said, eighth to ninth, ninth to tenth, tenth to eleventh, and to senior, you're potentially asking more of your Chromebooks. I think that the, in my opinion, the newer, more robust devices ought to go to those that are using the devices more. I think in the elementary, the same applies. I know as a little kid, as K1, 2, it's fun to push the buttons on the screen. However, if you're asking your fourth and fifth grader to do more and more and more, I would hate to pull those devices away from fourth and fifth. What I'd rather do is get the devices, even I've heard of tablets for the K1, 2, and 3, if that's what we need to do. I'm not trying to push old Toshiba's on the K1, 2, and 3. I'm just thinking, if they need touchscreens, maybe we get them tablets or we get them their own touchscreens. I just hate to pull away from those and push down. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I think the challenge for us there would be making sure that, well, then the senior would have to have a new device every year as they come in and then roll back down. It'd be reverse. It'd be kind of hard to do. We like our four-year rotation because it's convenient and it matches well with our grades. But I certainly understand that as we start moving into the elementary and have the dedicated devices, we're going to have a purchase for the elementary, like we did when Sunflower opened. We had a dedicated purchase. It wasn't hand-me-down devices. These are, actually, it was district-wide, fourth, fifth, these are your devices. We'll get there to where everyone has their new device, they're on a solid rotation. As Chris mentioned, we get down into the elementary, grade it for a dedicated device. We really need to get to that five, six, seven, eight rotation, fifth through eighth, ninth through 12th. That gets us our four years all the way through. But then our youngest, our youngest of our young are going to be the ones that we have to figure out the right device for. Is it a Chromebook? Is it a tablet? Is it something that doesn't exist yet? We don't know.
All right. Well, thank you for your question, Harold. Does anyone else have any questions for Dean before we ask for some action? Oh, Melidia, you're muted. Melidia?
My thing, my little button keeps hiding under Chris at the bottom of my screen, and I can't.
Sorry, sorry, I hid it from you.
The money to purchase these, is that coming from the CARES money that we got? Or what money are we using for this?
I don't know the answer to that question. I believe there is possibly, I'll just let Josh field the question.
It's my understanding that it's coming out of capital. Is that correct, Eric? That is correct. It would not be out of CARES Act money.
I think I asked that last meeting, and we said capital, which is part, and then there's like a sub fund under capital for tech.
The one more thing that I did want to address is that we did quote green shipping. Green shipping is basically, instead of us receiving 750 or 450 boxes, we get pallets with Chromebooks on them. Our stipulation for chrome shipping, well, we wanted them to be not someone repackaging them for us. We didn't want the waste to be generated in the first place. Vendor that did provide that, they didn't really outline that, but what they do is from the manufacturer, we get a crate that's full of Chromebooks. But it was at a significant cost, and to me, the idea of this green shipping is to save money and it's to save time. So for us, the biggest time's waste of setting up Chromebooks is unboxing, setting up and reboxing. The unboxing and reboxing is probably about 10 minutes per device, just getting all the bags out, getting all the chargers out, getting everything ready. We can eat that cost again this year. We don't want to, but we will. It's okay.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions?
I move that we approve Chromebook purchases.
I second.
So it has been moved by Harold and seconded by Chris that we approve Chromebook and cases for $146,000, $146,358. We'll go through a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0. Thank you, Dean. You've got your Chromebooks. We've got our Chromebooks. All right, we are on to section 6.02, which is our bus purchase. Mr. Robinson?
So we have a bus purchase. This is part of us maintaining our fleet of buses. This would be our normal rotation. What Frida is recommending is the Midwest Transit Bus, which is $111,716. It wasn't the low bid, it was about $2,000 more, but part of why she's recommending that bus has to do with consistency within our fleet and our individual that's maintaining our bus, being able to work on a bus made by the same manufacturer, and it will help us with parts and those kind of things. She also believes that it is sealed tighter, so driving on a lot of gravel roads, they didn't get as much dust and debris into the bus while driving it. And so that's where the recommendation is coming from of not choosing the low bid in this case.
I really appreciated her rationale when she explained why she wanted these buses. And I, driving on a gravel road, I truly appreciate not having dust seeping into your car. It's important. Therefore, I move that we approve the purchase of a bus from Midwest for $111,716.
It was moved by Linda Alderman. Is there a second?
I'd like a discussion first.
Can we go ahead and get the second, and then we can discuss before we vote?
Okay.
I will go ahead and second that. All right, and Chris?
One, I do appreciate her rationale. As Linda said, I live on the same gravel road that we both have to navigate. As we go through these bid processes, I know there's a lot of times we go with not the low bidder. A lot of times, it's local. Sometimes, just like with Dean's, it's rationale, and same with hers. It will caution us at times to continue doing this, because what happens to your bid process, you know, people, it's an open records act, they can go and look and see at the bid tab, and what happens is you start setting precedents, and you're not going to get as good of a bid turnout, because if you, if they start seeing every time that, hey, we've set a precedence, this isn't the first time we've used the same bus supplier, and the same bus supplier was not low bid earlier this year, and we still chose them, it just makes people's pencil not very sharp, and you don't get the bid turnout that you are wanting. And if we're not comparing apples to apples here on the type of buses, then I don't know if we need to relook how we asked them to bid these buses so they're compared. And I think this particular bus that we're talking about was actually a City-Ran bus and not our rural route one. You know, this one's $2,600 more. I think we're spending a little $2,000 more on another one that's, you know, almost $5,000, and we did that also earlier this year. And it just starts adding up. I think we need to sometimes look at this as different departments do these RFPs and really think about not choosing the low bid all the time.
Thank you. Are there any other items for discussion on this before we take a vote?
Well, I was going to ask for clarification, and Chris touched on it there. If I was looking at it right, doesn't it say here to a 77-passenger bus to accommodate the in-town busing needs?
Right now, we're running really minimal routes in town. So I, all of my information I understood would be that it would continue to be a route bus that would transport students anywhere within our school system.
Okay.
Melidia, does that adequately answer your question? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, just one more clarification. So do buses, like you purchase a bus, and then do they get switched for their use? Or if you buy it in town, does it stay in town? Or if it's a rural route, does it remain rural route?
So I don't have a lot of experience with scheduling buses. What I would tell you, though, just from my knowledge from previous years, is typically year-to-year, we're maintaining buses on a similar route, because you'll see bus numbers, you know, continue to, and drivers continue to maintain a same route as what they did the year before. I think with that said, you could see your need shift. And this is a year where I think part of adding a bus right now is flexibility-based as well. We anticipate, as we discussed later in the agenda, our reopen plan, that transportation is going to be one of our greatest challenges. So the other piece there that you somewhat alluded to is typically, we would have a trade-in. At this point, we're not recommending that with the other bus that we have. And there's the potential, as the board discussed a couple months ago, if that bus is not needed as part of our route process, that it may become a steam bus in the future for our schools to use and for our high school to be able to develop further.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think the only thing really, and I couldn't understand what she meant about working on, I guess I don't understand the difference in a chassis or different school bus. I guess I would call it like the fuselage where everybody sits. Other than that, I saw like the seat belts she felt like were the same in comparison. To me, I guess it came down to somewhat of working on them and the dust.
Well, plus, the seat belts retract back into the seats smoothly. She liked the way the driver area was situated. Loading and unloading lights were easily activated from the steering wheel, just some creature features.
All right. And real quick, before we go to a vote on this, I think, Dean, can you confirm, did Susan Ward join us? Is she here?
It just popped up, so she should be joining us now.
Here, okay. Susan, to catch you up, we have a motion on the floor to approve the bus purchase from Midwest for $111,716, and we were just having some discussion on that. Is there any further discussion before we take this vote? Okay, I will go through roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
No.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Yes. Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 6-1. All right, thank you all, and we are moving down to the next bus issue. We have a sped bus purchase. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, and she was recommending at this point Masters Transportation. I think on the actual bid sheet, the dollar amount was incorrect, and I think Dr. Cobb's updated that when he communicated with the board. The actual cost is $67,575, which is in alignment with the low bid. I think it's about $25, $30 more than what the other one is. Part of this one has to do with how the interior of the bus is set up. We're using it to transport multiple students in wheelchairs, and with how the wheel wells set up in this one, it creates a flat floor, which makes it easier to move individuals with wheelchairs within the bus, and also provides for a little bit more headspace for staff on the bus to be able to move and supporting students. It's also, again, consistent with the fleet that we already have in place, and that's why Frida was recommending this bus over the others on the list.
Any discussion on this? Any questions?
No, I will just say this one also is $2,000 more. It's not less than $100 or whatever, it's not the low bid.
Thank you. Would somebody like to take action on this?
I move that we purchase this bus from Masters Transportation for $67,575.
That was Linda Alderman who made that motion. Is there a second? Yes, Susan Ward. And we will take the roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
No.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward? Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 6-1. Thank you. And we are down to approving the change order for the turf project. Mr. Robinson?
So if I remember back to the initial process that the board undertook, when they first put the turf for the soccer field and football field out for bid, there was a discussion amongst the board about soil stabilization. And this is in alignment with what we ran into when we did the high school construction. So this was somewhat expected. I think what we really needed was for the testing to be done to tell us to what extent it needed to be done. Olson, who is our third party, did that testing last week, and that's part of what was incorporated into this bid process. And so they're recommending, it was Olson who ultimately recommended the depth at which the stabilization would go. And some of you, I would guess, know more about stabilization than I do, but as we were talking with them last week, the track was already, there was already a stabilization cost included in the track expenditures, and so this should just be addressing the football field and the soccer field.
Any questions for Mr. Robinson on this?
No.
Would somebody like to make a motion for an action on this?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the change of order for a total of $125,350 for stabilization of the soccer field and football field.
Second.
That motion was made by Chris Cunningham, and that second was Susan Ward, is that correct?
Yep. I think you can actually hear me now.
I can, I can. All right, let's go through a roll call vote for that, please. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. All right, we are down to handbook second read, and I think Mr. Stoltenberg has a few things to share with us on that, so we will welcome him.
So Mr. Stoltenberg's going to come and present. The middle school and high school made a few changes based on feedback from the board at the last board meeting. Other than the changes that were made in those handbooks, the rest of the handbooks remain as they were presented at the last meeting, so we shouldn't have anything additional unless there's questions from the board once he's done presenting.
I just had two, a couple quick changes here again. Like Mr. Robinson said, this was in accordance with the feedback from the board, last board meeting. The first is just OMS-specific with eligibility. We strike the first line, saying eligibility was determined by the principal in accordance with CACIA guidelines. I think there was some concern about that particular sentence. We just went ahead and just strike that. And then in the OVLP handbook, which is both OMS and OHS, we had some concern about making sure that our community understood that we would be willing to work with them if there were any issues with connectivity. So we went ahead and added the sentence, "If internet connection is an issue, please contact the OVLP administrator at Eugene Field to discuss options," to make sure that it was in there so they recognized that we'd be willing to work with them. So it's not if they don't have that connection that they're just completely out of luck.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stoltenberg about those changes, or to Mr. Robinson about any of the other handbooks before we take action?
No.
Would somebody like to take action on the approval of these handbooks?
Madam President? I'd make a motion that we approve the handbooks as presented.
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Susan Ward that we take action on these handbooks and approve them as proposed. I will go through a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. All right, we are down to probably one of the most important parts of our evening tonight as we move on to the reopen plan. Mr. Robinson?
So I know that this presentation is not simply for the board, but also for our community, and so our administrative team, Dr. Cobb's included, have spent a lot of time looking at what do we present tonight? What's the first step in preparing our community and our families for what reopening might look like? What I would stress from the very beginning is that our vision for our school system doesn't change. Our goal is still to graduate all of our students with the knowledge, skills, and behavior to hold life, sustain, and employment. What we know at this time is that because of the situation our community is in and our nation is in, that that's going to have to look very different, and we're going to have to ask some very different things of our staff and of our students and families. We have considered a lot of things as we make this first recommendation tonight. We have started to look at what we anticipate the State Board of Education will review on Wednesday, and the recommendations that will come from there. We've been in contact with our local health officials to get guidance, and I would tell you, I am more than appreciative of Dr. Ransom and the Franklin County Health Department in answering all of our questions and continuing to provide support as we work through what's best for our community. We have also been working in collaboration with our building leadership teams and have worked with numerous parent groups over the course of the summer. Even with all of that, what I would stress is that no matter how we open, it's not going to meet everyone's expectations. And so we're trying to do a couple things that our Commissioner of Ed has stressed, and one of those is to prepare our community for a really fluid situation this school year. We anticipate that, based on what's been provided- We anticipate that based on what's been provided to us, that we will see times where all of our students are in session in our schools. And we will see times where we are not able to do that. And so the methodology that we're using to provide education hopefully will provide us flexibility in being able to meet all students' needs during those times. The other piece that we have continued to push with the teams we've been working with is that this has to align to our community's needs. We are watching very closely what districts around us are proposing. We're watching the ever-changing landscape of education across the nation and what different systems are, are choosing to do. And yet we have to look as a system at what's best for, for Ottawa and for our students and our building. Both our, our, our populations in a very different spot. We're seeing different numbers than some other communities. We're seeing a different perspective from our parents. And we're trying to make a recommendation tonight that we believe is, is best for our kids. So I will walk you through just the big, big picture of it and kind of where we're starting. And I will try to give you a clear direction tonight as to what we're asking for the board for approval tonight and what we will come back to the board with in the future. But I would encourage you as I go to please ask questions because it is likely that there are others listening who have similar questions. I would also tell you that there is no way we could address everything in one evening. This topic continues to evolve into something much bigger than I think even we would have expected when we started. And so we're going to try to focus on the big things that we need to provide to our, our schools and families to be able to get things started. And then we'll come back with a follow-up at the next board meeting from Dr. Cobb's with even more details. So what we're looking for tonight is for our Board of Education to approve us reopening our schools with a hybrid model. And we're using this terminology slightly different than I think what the state will use in their document. But really what we're asking for is the ability to give our families some choice. Dr. Cobb's has shared feedback from parent surveys, which indicate that we have a portion of families that believe for their children, starting in a remote learning setting, and I'll go in more detail as to what remote learning might look like in a few minutes, but that that may be best for their kids and for their family. What we'd like to be able to do when we open our enrollment July 23rd is to be able to give families the option as part of the enrollment process of saying it's best for my kid and for my family to start in person or it's best for my, my child and for my family to start with a remote learning option. And I'll talk more about what that looks like. What I would tell you as far as in-person goes, we've already taken numerous steps to put precautions in place. County, Derek Brown and the, and the county have been in contact with us already about purchases of protective equipment. We've seen things such as hand sanitizer machines or 360 machines to be able to sanitize our buildings have been purchased. Additional masks and face shields for, for staff and parents as necessary have been part of that purchase as well. So we're seeing a lot of those pieces are already in, in, in purchase and on their way to be able to create a safe learning environment for, for all students. The other piece that is here is we've, as I said earlier, we've been in close contact with our health department here in town. We've been following closely what KSDE has been advising superintendents on for the last few months. One of the big questions that has come to our board office over the last couple of days and will continue to come to board members is, are we requiring masks as school starts? We are not coming to the board tonight recommending a mask requirement. What I would tell you and I would share with the community is we are following closely what the governor's executive order is, is requiring. And we would recommend complying with that order should it still be in effect when school begins. With that said, there are several locations that we will likely come back to the board and discuss whether masks are an appropriate way for us to manage. When you talk about the number of students we transport on a bus every day, passing periods at the high school and middle school, there are places where social distancing is, is a challenge for us and, and could be a roadblock to us being able to open schools successfully. But we will come back to the board as we have more clarity on what the State Board adopts on Wednesday and what's being recommended by our county health officials. But I did want to mention that piece because I know it's a question for many of our staff members and for our families as they make a determination as to what to do with enrolling their child. Dean, would you go ahead and go to the next slide? Devices, Dean talked a little bit earlier. This was a conversation at the last board meeting. Our anticipation right now is that we have enough devices for kindergarten through 12th grade. Obviously, our sixth graders through 12th grade would already be issued a, a device. At kindergarten through 5th grade, one of the first things we will do in that first week of school is go ahead and sign each of our elementary students a device. And part of that is we want to make sure that if school closure is to occur, that we're prepared to be able to move from in-person learning to, to a transition to remote learning very seamlessly. And so having those devices already assigned makes it easy for us to distribute them. We don't intend for those devices to go home on a regular basis unless school closure occurs. But we do have enough devices in place to be able to, to issue one to every, every child at the very beginning of school year. The other thing I would stress are those students who are, who are choosing to attend virtually, we want to make sure that they start the same as our regular students. So Thursday, August 13th is our first scheduled day of school. We want to make sure that we're able to start every student at the same time. In years past, there's been a slight lag as our students for OLC and OVLP and were able to come and pick up devices. This year, more than ever, it's important to us that that pickup is occurring before the first day of school so that students are able to pick up and, and start the very first day of school. And so our, our building principals have been asked to start working with their leadership teams on a number of things that I'll describe later in this presentation. But one of those is how we're going to issue devices before school starts. And, and just to make sure we don't have any delays in student learning. The third piece of this I really wanted to define is what remote and virtual learning looks like, and then I'll stop for a minute and, and open it for board discussions. When we stopped school last year, we went into a mode that we called continuous learning. I would tell you that nothing we're providing is going to look like that this school year. We learned a lot in the process. We learned a lot from our families. We got great feedback from the focus groups that we held. Parents were honest about what worked and what different, didn't work. But there's also some different expectations coming from the state of Kansas. So just for board discussion, I want to make sure that we really separate these two terms, remote learning and virtual learning. Virtual learning we've had in place for many years for our, for our high school students. This year, if we have students at the middle school and high school level that are expressing that they believe it's in their child's best interest not to attend in person, our recommendation is going to be that they attend through our virtual platform and that we use our Play-Doh program as the main driving component of our instruction. And we connect them with classroom instructors at the middle school and high school more than we have in the past to be able to support their learning. That's very different than remote learning. Remote learning is what we would look to do at both the elementary level, but also should the middle school or high school get closed for two weeks or a month or whatever the case may be throughout the year, and we transition kids from an in-person class to a temporary environment, remote learning is an extension of what they would get in the classroom. We would be asking them in that setting to be able to access the internet multiple times a day, to be able to get resources from, from their classroom teacher or instruction directly from their classroom teacher. This aligns with what we anticipate the State Department requiring as part of remote learning. We actually anticipate them setting an expectation that students are in contact with a staff member on a daily basis. That's very different than what we did, but also aligns with the feedback that our parents provided back in May as we met with both general education and special education parents. We heard from both of them that having more contact with classroom teachers was important. With that said, it will create some challenges for some of our families. I know one of the questions the board had previously was about connectivity. I know Mr. Gurrell has been working on a number of options. We had hotspots available through a project with Sprint at the high school level. He has been working with our local providers to determine the best route to go. But we are looking to purchase additional hotspots to make available for other students throughout the district that may need that access. I would also remind the board that each time we have been closed, the option has been there for us to bring the students into the building for small periods of time, whether that was in small groups, one-on-one. Last year, we used it sparingly because of just not being sure how to keep staff safe, how to keep students safe as we made that initial school closure. That may be another option for connectivity, though, would be to allow some students to come in periodically to download or access our school internet if possible. So we have a number of options. It will really be about, as Mr. Stoltenberg mentioned earlier, it'll really be about schools looking at what's best for each family and problem solving with the family to, to be able to meet those needs. I would stress again, though, we would be looking at remote learning for temporary closure. We would also be looking at remote learning for elementary students whose families are choosing that option over an in-person environment. One of the things that that creates is at the middle school, high school level, we have staff designated for virtual learning. We won't know until we open our enrollment process, and that's part of why we're asking the board to allow that choice in the enrollment process. We won't know what those numbers look like. When we survey staff and we see that our survey parents and we see that about 20% of them are requesting a remote learning option, we don't know that that translates exactly to a certain number of students because we will see some families that that's their preference. But out of necessity, their work, other family obligations are going to push them to still put their kid in school. So opening it in the enrollment process will give us hard numbers to be able to really determine the staff that are needed. Our elementaries have been asked to start problem solving through this idea of remote learning at the elementary level. And again, we won't know whether it's going to require a teacher at each grade level from each building or whether having a teacher for the entire district at a grade level could address the need. We really won't know until we open the enrollment process. What I would stress with the, the board is that this may be one piece where Sunflower's solution to this challenge looks slightly different than what Garfield or Lincoln look like. And part of that will be us working through staff needs and how teams function and really working with building principals on what's best for their building. But we'll be able to give the board a, a better indication of this as we proceed into the enrollment process. But we want to make sure that the board is comfortable with us opening up these options to families. The other piece I would stress for families listening is we're anticipating that students working either virtually or remotely, that there will be new expectations from the Kansas State Department of Education, that there will be an expectation of them logging daily and, and providing something to the school that shows their students' progress on a regular basis for us to be able to then report back to the state. That's very different from an accountability standpoint than where we were last year. And I, I want families to understand that because as they're making a decision as to what's best, I want them to understand that the state is going to ask us to expect things of them differently than what we did last time, which isn't a bad thing. We've got to expect more of both our students and some of our staff in this new model to be able to, to really get where we want to as a school system. I'd stop and take a breath there. Are there, are there any questions to this, to this point?
I've, I've had some patrons ask, should their children choose to use Play-Doh? To be on that, will there be a teacher? You said they would be connected to classroom instructors. How, how would that, what would that look like?
So we already, in our current virtual system, we have teachers who are already assigned this responsibility for our, our typical virtual program. And their role is to support students who are working in Play-Doh and may have, may have questions about math or science or whatever the, the subject matter would be. I would tell you they're accessed really minimally in our previous virtual platform. This will likely be an area where we will need to shift some staff, provide additional support. If we really see the number of students who the survey suggests would go this direction, we will likely have to look at, as those students shift from in-person to virtual, can we rework the schedule at middle school and high school to free up a teacher for an hour to be able to provide additional support? I, I know that both Mr. Stoltenberg and Mrs. Whitaker have already mentioned some of this to their leadership team. I know the high schools had some conversations about how different departments may, may address some of that. What we want to make sure is that if we have families that are choosing to do this not for the rest of their school career, but are doing it in a short term because of a response to the, to the, the current health situation, that we're providing additional support for them to meet expectations so that when they're ready, they're able to transition back into the regular school environment. And that's another piece that, that's different than what we would normally offer. Typically, our students that are going virtual would, once they make that transition, they are there until they graduate. We know that, that what we're going to see are some students are going to be there for three weeks. Some are going to be there for a semester. Some are going to finish out this school year and then need to come back. And so what we're really working with our principals on are putting structures in place where families can communicate with the school and problem solve through when is the best time for my kid to transition back to Ottawa Middle School or Ottawa High School. But we believe it's got to be more fluid than what it has been in previous years. So just our speculation is that we're going to have some students who choose this as an option and then find out that learning virtually is harder than it looks. And rather than see them fail, we want to be able to transition them back into a, a traditional school environment where we can get more support from classroom teachers, rather than having them stay there and struggle. And so we're trying to work through our system to look at how do you do that? That's hard because it creates gaps in their learning. Even if they're taking an algebra class on Play-Doh and they transition to an algebra class at Ottawa High School, there's going to be differences in how it's paced and what's expected. And so being able to make that transition in a positive manner for a student is going to, going to take some problem solving and flexibility on our staff perspective to be able to make this work.
Thank you.
Dr. Robinson? I have a question. I guess the more I have thought about this and, and even through the weekend and today, I guess maybe the best way is saying the more I'm disappointed in the middle school and high school rollout because I understand the elementary, if I'm missing it, just correct me because you're right, if I'm missing, maybe somebody else is. I'm slower than most, so it takes me a while to process this. But in the elementary school, I hear you're taking a teacher. If I go remote or virtual, whatever you want to call it, and I know we're talking about virtual. If I'm virtual, I'm essentially expected to do the same thing as what's happened in classroom. And you said whether it's a grade level per building or per district, there'll be a third grade teacher helping the virtual learners in third grade. And they'll be kind of essentially working at the same pace and same curriculum. So I see where I could start out at home and be virtual. And then if I want to transition back, I can. I also can see where my education experience could be very similar. But then when I get to the middle school and high school, I kind of take a, a sharp right turn down a detour deal. And I guess my disappointment is I think we have some really great teachers in English and math and science and, and things like that. And we are pretty close. If I understand what my high school kids have been doing over the years, they're doing a lot of work on their phone book after hours. They're watching videos, they're doing assignments. And what I'm disappointed is, is that if I want to do virtual, I no longer get direct access to those teachers. I'm taking a deviation down Play-Doh, if you will. And then, like you just said, if I want to come back in a month or two, well, that transition's a lot harder. well, that transition's a lot harder because I haven't been theoretically going down the course with my classmates. Okay. And my instructors, you know, whether I'm in English or, or whatever, I've been over here on Plato and now I'm coming back. And I guess my disappointment is I was kind of hoping that we would model the same that we're doing in elementary in our upper grades and somehow find out how, you know, we can keep that going on because I think we have some dynamic technology in place. We have some dynamic instructors who can pull that off. And I don't know that you'd miss that much if you were virtual. So that's all my only thought. Maybe you could help me clear up why my deviation isn't a deviation.
So, and I can ask Dr. Cobb's and Mr. Stoltenberg and Mrs. Whitaker to come back even more as they would have a better understanding of secondary instruction than I would. But I would just share with you, part of this becomes logistical and it also is a matter of, at elementary, all third grade teachers, for example, are trained in very much the same way and they're licensed to teach, to teach everything. When you get to middle school and high school, some of this becomes the logistics of licensure and who, who is able to teach certain content. So when you talk about the number of students that we will likely have attending middle school and high school, if we shift, you know, an English teacher and a math teacher and a science teacher, all completely virtual, we start to overload our, our system at, at the middle school and high school. What we are looking at doing that's different though, Harold, and I think we'll be able to still meet, part of what I'm hearing you say is your expectation is, we have started the conversation about how do we get our, our subject matter teachers more involved? I think it's really hard, once you go to a virtual platform, to completely hold the same pace as the rest of the class at that level. And there are structures within Plato that, that I think are positive in that environment. And that's ultimately why we were choosing to go that direction. But what we're really looking at doing is how do we free up a high school English language arts teacher? And whether that's for one period or two, well, you know, whatever that might be will really be dependent on how many students are choosing to go that way. But we want to make sure they have more access to content teachers. Right now, though, what we're really trying to do is how do we meet the needs of everybody? So I will take that back to our team, Harold, and make sure that we're looking at it. And if there's a better way for us to, to address some of those needs, then we'll bring that back to the board at the next meeting.
Yes, I'm also, I'm also concerned about that. And I, I wanted to clarify, I have several questions on this, but I did want clarification on the vote. So if we vote yes tonight to open with the hybrid model, are we saying, yes, I support the decision for six through 12 to have to enroll an Ottawa virtual learning program?
What we're saying tonight is, or what we would be asking for the board to approve is for us to give parents the option on the enrollment form to choose in-person or to choose a remote learning option. We are still working out a lot of details. And as we look at what the state board approves on Wednesday, I think our Board of Education has to understand that we could come back to you at the next meeting with a very different plan, depending on, on what their, their guidelines ultimately specify. We have seen some of that. So this is based on what we anticipate them presenting. But Melidia, to answer your question, really what I feel like you're, you're approving tonight is the ability for us to give parents the option, which really hasn't been something we've done previously. I think we can still continue to work on the details and the best way to provide those options. But right now, we're just asking for the option to open it in the enrollment process.
Okay, because I support the two options, but I do not support six through 12 having to enroll an Ottawa virtual learning program for many different reasons. Harold had, had good ones. I know from personal experience currently where people are taking trips to states they have to quarantine to. And we can't pressure parents to make decisions based on their child having to switch from,
So I would just-
Plato and being way behind.
But I would just clarify, that's not what we're asking. What we're asking are for students who, whose parents are saying, this is my option for the year, that are for, that we're looking at a long period of time. That's the place that we have been pushing for Plato to be our option. Those students who see their quarantine or short-term disruptions due to quarantine or, you know, school closure, whatever the case may be, those we would still, even at six, 12, be looking at a remote learning option. Really what we're looking at are those that are choosing this as I'm anticipating my child is going to be there for the semester or, or the majority of the school year, that, that going virtually may be the better option for them than the remote learning option. Does that make more sense? I mean, I-
I mean, it does, but I, I just think it's, I, I think it's a very disappointing decision. I do not support it at all. It should not be the answer. And I feel, I feel almost as if you're making a mockery of the parents who are choosing to keep their kids home. How you said, you know, you're going to find out it's much more difficult to learn online and it's not just going to be as easy as you think. They're not doing, they're not choosing online enrollment for their children because they think it's going to be easy or like, hey, you can stay home and do stuff and still graduate or whatever. It's, it's a special case. This is all new.
But I think your, your assumption suggests that the Plato program and the virtual program that we've been offering and we've seen numerous students graduate from is a lesser educational option for students and families. For the last few years, we've seen a high number of students go through our virtual program and through Ottawa Learning Center and graduate with success, go on to, to hold employment. We still believe with teacher involvement that we can provide a quality educational opportunity through virtual learning. So I don't know that we're making a mockery of it. I think what we're trying to do is, is to meet the number, both the student needs and the staff needs with the resources that we have available to us at this time.
I'm not saying that it is less because I know several people who do it and have, have done very well and are now thriving in life. I'm not saying that. I just feel like you are trying to pressure parents, like we're going to make this more difficult. So when you want to bring your child back, it's going to be more difficult instead of trying to make it more easy and seamless for them is, is what I'm, I mean, I don't think. And then, so if you, if you're for like the mask mandate, so are you saying that parents who don't want to send their kids to school if they have to wear a mask, is that a temporary thing or are you saying they should go to the, the OVLP? Because we don't know how long that's going to last.
Please ask that question again because at this point, we're, we would not be requiring a mask mandate. And less either the governor continues her executive order similar to what we're, we're doing right now with our summer school program or that our county health officials encourage us or require us to do so because of a significant increase in cases within our community. So I guess I don't, I don't understand your, your question completely. What I would tell you before you ask though, is we have had a mandate in place throughout summer school. I would tell you, we are seeing students from kindergarten through 12th grade who are accessing education and wearing a mask and being very successful with it. We've had little to, to no issue with, with families and the mask expectation to this, this point. I think it's really, it really comes down to our, our Board of Education having a further discussion as we get more information on what the State Department of Ed is going to recommend. And what I would tell you, their initial guidance to schools suggests that, that it is best practice for middle school and high school to use masks at school. It doesn't suggest so, and I think the state board will adopt something similar to this on Wednesday, that they aren't recommending that at the elementary level at this time. What I would tell you with masks is masks right now are really polarizing and political issue within our community. What we want to make sure we're doing, no matter what our recommendation is from the board on masks as we approach the start of school, is that those students and families who choose to attend school and wear a mask, that we are setting up an environment that supports them. And at the same time, that we're working with students who choose not to, if we're leaving it as a choice. And so I don't know that our intention should, a family say, I'm not wearing a mask is to transition them to a virtual platform. We may have to work around other city and state guidelines, should they be in place. But that's not our intention at this time.
You know, Josh, I was, I was kind of reading it the opposite of Melidia. I was seeing the, the OLV program as an opportunity for parents to continue enrolling their children in school with a quality education if they were concerned about the COVID and where it was going and how, and their children. I just saw it as another avenue for educating children. I, I did not read it the way Melidia did at all.
Harold? I think you're still on mute.
Thank you. Okay, I'll learn that little button. I guess here's, here's how I'm going to say it. I don't, I'm not here to judge Plato tonight. I think Plato has a, has a role somewhere and I'm not an expert. So let's kind of leave that to somebody else. What I will say that I think I can speak with full throat, 100%. Plato isn't a substitute for our high school and our middle school teachers who are way above beyond Plato. And I do think what we're doing in the elementary is we're saying, we may not be literally line item for line item when we're taking a third grade teacher and we may not be getting an exact, but we're at 90, 95%, maybe even 97%. When we go from Mrs. Black teaching English to Plato, I might be the only one in the world, but I can't believe that Plato English is Mrs. Black English. And my other fear is in six months or a year, when I want to bring my little Johnny or Sally back to OHS and they go back to Mrs. Black's class, there will be a deficiency. But if I take that third grader and bring back at Christmas after they open up their Christmas gift, there won't be near the deficiency. So I guess what I'd really like the board and, I mean, I'd really like the administration and administrators to think about the next two weeks is, is that it's just that gap in learning because I don't think Plato equals Mrs. Black's English. And I don't think when that student comes back to middle school and high school, they're going to be at the same place. And, and so whereas I'm not talking down Plato, and maybe I am, maybe I should be. But what I am saying, I'm, I'm talking up our teachers. And it's disappointing to hear that our students won't be able to get the same education and then be able to come back because we all think this is temporary that we'll have students who come back. So that's all I'm saying is, is that I'd like us to rethink the Plato option and enrolling into OLC if I want to be virtual.
No, I agree with you, Harold. I, I agree with everything you've said. But I do think there are some parents that are incredibly anxious about sending their kids back to school in the midst of COVID and Plato is, is the option to continue their children's learning. That, that's all I'm saying.
I think, I think it's, you know, I agree with what Harold and, and some of what Melidia and Linda have said so far. I, I think what we're looking at tonight is we are wanting to go ahead with this hybrid program. So it's going to be both. I think it's a little bit early to say that at the middle school and high school, these are your two choices because we just don't have enough information from the state. Our administrators at the middle school and high school are magic workers, in my opinion, in what they're able to do and come up with. I know that teachers are wanting to work and once they know what those guidelines are going to be, are going to want to offer things for our students so they can continue their current plan of learning. So I think from my perspective, I'm comfortable with definitely going forward with this hybrid. We have to have a choice. We need to be able to be in classroom and we need to be able to be virtual. I'm not comfortable with saying, here's our plan that we're going to do for our high school and middle school at this point.
Yeah.
That makes sense?
And from my perspective, I think from the healthcare aspect of things, we don't know where this is going. We have to be supportive. We are there to teach all kids. And so that means supporting those parents who are anxious and don't want to send their kids, but also supporting those that do or need to. And so however that evolves over the next few weeks, I think we don't have a choice but to accept a hybrid model. I think it's the best of what we can do right now. Ideally, we'd have everybody at school, but I don't think that's going to be able to happen. So I think we've got to accept what the cards we've been dealt and kind of move forward with this.
There's a few other things that I would, oh, sorry, Susan, I didn't mean to cut you off.
All right.
Dean, if you keep going, I just want to share a few other things and I'll run through some of this very quickly. And then if there's, there's additional questions at the end. What we've started working with our building principals on is what that first week of school in-person might look like. We are really stressing with our staff that even the first week in-person, we want them to be working with students and their families on what remote learning may look like. All indications from our State Department of Ed indicate that we will see periods of school closure. And so one of the things that we didn't have the opportunity to do last year was to really train students and their families on what expectations might, might look like, what model we might be using. This year, kindergarten through 12th grade, we will be using Google Classroom as our platform. And so making sure families and students know how to access, how to turn in assignments. And part of that is to make sure that no matter if I've got a second grader at Sunflower and I've got a, a sixth grader at the middle school, that I'm still working within the same platform. So that first week will really be about getting staff training, getting devices in the hands of kids and really making sure that everybody understands what those expectations might look like should we need to go remote learning. The other piece we wanted to talk about just briefly is professional development for our staff. Mrs. Bybee and her team have been really working with our, our teachers. I would tell you, we've got a number of, of staff members who are extremely talented in the area of providing learning through technology. And they've done a great job of, of starting to get some resources out to teachers, starting to set expectations. Much of our beginning of the year professional development will center around how to provide instruction through technology. In part, this is an area we haven't focused on as much because our, our main medium for providing instruction has been face-to-face. And so we want to make sure our staff have the resources. We started working with a committee back the end of May, beginning of June, trying to identify a little bit of what teacher needs might be and starting to put in place some professional development that way. The other change you will likely see for professional development is looking at how, how we provide it to our staff. We are encouraging more professional development in buildings to keep our, our class size, for lack of a better term, within it with our staff at a smaller level, similar to what we're trying to do with our students. It would be irresponsible for us to put our whole staff together as we normally would for our first day of school back. And so you will see us using some different technology options, even with our staff this year in how we provide that, those first few days of professional development. And we've got some good resources. We're trying to mirror what they may be doing with their students so they can see the other side of it. We've seen some groups already, I know the middle school group that was working with technology this summer. Patrice Peoples has had them working in a Google Classroom throughout the school year or throughout the summer. So we're, our professional development will really take a focus more on remote learning. We will have some of those other pieces that are built into our strategic plan there. We will address some things that are requirements of the state, such as the start of dyslexia training and, and some of the other required things at the beginning of the year. But much of that, we are going to shift further back into the year and really make sure our teachers have what they need to, to meet students' needs from the very beginning. The last thing I would mention, both to the board and to parents, is there's still a lot. And as we debate things earlier on, there's still a lot for our buildings to work through. We are still awaiting final guidance from the state of Kansas. I think Wednesday, we're anticipating the State Board of Ed will take some action on recommendations to help us in opening. They will address recommendations for things like lunchroom and recess and how students should be grouped, hygiene such as hand washing. None of these are expected to be hard and fast guidelines. They're all supposed to be recommendations that we can look at and look at what's best for our community. I saw before I came into this meeting that Governor Kelly has also announced a press conference on Wednesday to look- conference on Wednesday to look at school reopening. So there we're at an interesting time in even bringing a presentation to the board as we could still see both our state and our our national government take some different steps that may change our course. But we felt like to be prepared for the first day of school, we need to be able to open enrollment, and we need to be able to do so with with parents having the option. If we delay those things, we really put our our buildings in a really difficult spot. So we have already had our building leadership teams meet once last week. They will meet weekly throughout the month of July. They are coming in on Thursday with Mrs. Bybee and I to hear Dr. Watson's presentation to superintendents and the school officials. They will meet in their own buildings and watch the presentation, and then we're hosting a virtual meeting afterwards to start brainstorming through some of those areas. We've asked them as buildings to start looking at some of some of those areas that we know are going to be our greatest challenge, pickup and drop off, lunchroom, what are we doing with with recess? We've presented some ideas to them, but we felt like they needed to really process through them. And I would tell you, responses from principals Friday and this morning, as I followed up on how those meetings went, we have staff that are taking this very seriously. They want to make sure that we're creating the best environment for students and that we're keeping everybody involved safe. And they they've done a tremendous job already in problem solving through some of these areas and raising concerns in areas we hadn't hadn't even addressed to this point. And I would tell you, every day as we discuss these issues, we solve one problem and we find two more. And so that's going to be the nature of July is hopefully to address as many of those things as we possibly can before students would need to enter our buildings. Dr. Cobb's is expecting to put out communication to families tomorrow for the first time based on how tonight's board meeting and board discussion went. We will continue to do that from from the board office weekly from here on out as we know that some parents will be frustrated tonight because they want to see the details. I would tell you, so do we. But what we want to make sure is that they're the right details as we put them out. And so we will issue new updates each week based on the information that we receive, both from our our building leadership teams and from state and county leadership. And so there there's still a lot to come in the month of July. Again, what we're asking for tonight is just permission to be able to offer multiple options to our students, which is different than what we've what we traditionally do.
I had one more one more comment about the enrollment opening July 23rd. I'm I'm concerned that parents aren't going to know which to choose right now because with the mask issue, not knowing what that will be at that time, they aren't sure which to choose. And so I know I had mentioned asking about that when the poll was sent out, it asked if you were able to provide a mask, but it didn't ask about, I feel like we need those numbers on what that would make the difference of so we could have better insight to what we need to prepare for.
And when you ask for insight on wearing masks, are you wanting it from staff as well? Because I would tell you, right now, the feedback that I have from building leadership teams is overwhelmingly in support of masks being involved in some part of our school day. And yet I would tell you, on the student's side, I think what we're going to get, and our commissioner has shared it, we had a state board member today who posted it on on his Facebook page, and I appreciate his response. We're going to see both right now. We're going to see families who say, I'm not sending my kid to school if you ask them to wear a mask, and we're going to see others say, if you don't require masks, I'm not sending her your kid to school. I also think we're going to see this really depend on state and and local guidelines as well. But we can get additional information from parents on masks. I just I would want to make sure that if we put that out to parents, that the board is willing to support what comes back.
I'm just saying, I'm concerned that on both sides, I completely agree because I'm here to represent all the students. And so I'm just afraid that parents aren't going to know how, I mean, I'm not exactly sure if I know which to choose for my children if I'm supposed to go and do the online enrollment on July 23rd.
Yeah. So and here's what I would tell you, typically, our enrollment is already is already open. We've delayed it to the 23rd in part to be able to see what expectations were going to come from the state of Kansas. I think the other piece is if we delay enrollment opening, we make it even harder for our schools to make good decisions about how to address student needs. And the reason for that is it really comes down to, we're going to have to potentially ask some staff to do some different things based on how many students choose to go remotely. And so my my only concern, I hear what you're saying, and I understand from tonight's discussion that we're still going to need to provide additional information to many in our community to be able to make that decision. Enrollment would remain open even after the next board meeting. And so opening it only allows those that have already made a decision to go ahead and let us know that. Those that want to wait until the last board meeting in July to hear additional information would still be able to do so. So I don't know that we're impacting them in that manner either, if that answers your concern.
It does. If there's no rush to enroll, then I think I think that's fine.
I think. We need two weeks from now, we may not have any more answers than what we have now.
Correct, Susan, you're right. Yeah, okay, so question, two questions and a comment or one question and comment. If I enroll on July 23rd and on July 30th, one way, on July 30th, if I change my mind, I can switch?
Yep.
Okay, so I think there is some ability to go in and say, you know, if somebody wants to enroll one way or the other, and then more information comes out up until July, I mean, August, whatever, 13th, they may switch their mind. I agree with what Dr. Robyn's saying. It'd be nice to know as soon as we can kind of what people are thinking, but we're still going to give them the ability to switch if need be.
Our right now, Harold, and I know you've got additional comments, but we want to make sure that parents are able to make an adjustment both both directions. As we see numbers change, as we see what's best for their student change, we want them to be able to make that decision.
I think that's great, and I appreciate the flexibility that you're building in. I think that's great. I support the hybrid model. I even support you coming back with option number three, even though we don't even know if there is an option three. I will take the only question I want to pose to if I vote yes tonight is on page four of your PowerPoint, students will enroll in auto virtual learning program and use Play-Doh if they go virtual. Are are like you said earlier that you really are looking to have at least two options, hybrid, the hybrid model, and that you still were somewhat flexible in the enrollment and forcing them to enroll in OLC? So my question is, can we vote tonight for the hybrid model and still come back to the next meeting and discuss that how we deliver that virtual learning? Or if we vote tonight yes, are we automatically forcing those kids into OLC?
No, if I remember right, how the enrollment form is set up, it's really an option between in person and remote or virtual learning. It doesn't specify exactly what that would look like. So we could still come through. We're going to have other details to still work through at the next board meeting. And so I hear your concern, and I I think our team, or at least our team members that are here tonight, hear it as well. And so we'll take that back to our administrative team and just start problem solving through both sides of this issue. If there's a reason logistically that Play-Doh continues to be our best option, we will come back and do a better job of explaining that to our board. And if there's ways to to work with Ottawa Middle School and Ottawa High School to provide an option more similar to what we're doing at elementary, we'll present that as well.
But if I'm voting yes tonight, am I voting to enroll students into OLC through Play-Doh? Or if I vote yes tonight, will we come back to the next meeting and make that vote a separate vote?
Yeah, we can come back and have that as a separate discussion. What we're really asking tonight is to be able to put out to parents whether in person is the best option for them or whether they're looking for something alternative.
I hear I hear him having three definitions of remote and virtual and in person. Three options, I mean, not three definitions, but I'm hearing a remote option, a virtual option, and a in-person option.
Yes. I think our enrollment form, and I'm looking around to see if anybody else has seen it. I believe our enrollment form specifies in person or or remote. That's really what we're looking for is is the ability to offer offer them an option, either one. We need to know how many students are planning to attend at a traditional school building for the first day of school. We can continue to work with families that say, that's not best for me as to what the delivery model looks like for them and for their child. But what we really need to be able to do through the enrollment process is determine which direction our families are leaning. Are they really looking to have their child attend in person based on what they know today? Or are they looking for an alternate option?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Are there any other questions for him before we make a motion on this topic tonight? Would somebody like to make a motion to take action?
Madam President, I'd make a motion that we accept the hybrid model, that we could allow the district to move forward with registration and enrollment, I'm sorry, and that I move that at the next meeting, we come back and decide on Play-Doh or the best use of how we deliver virtual. So that tonight's motion is to accept the hybrid model and allow enrollment to proceed full steam ahead, and the next meeting, we come back and decide the model to deliver the virtual learning or remote, if you will.
Second.
I second.
Okay, so that was moved by Harold, and it was seconded first by Susan Ward. She beat you, Melidia, so I'll count her.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. That we and I just want to make sure I have this right, Harold, that we approve the hybrid model with no specifications as to how that is going to happen at this point. Am I correct?
And that we come back to the next meeting and decide if we have them enroll in OLC through Play-Doh or how we deliver that. But yes.
How about we just say, how about we just say that at future meeting, we will determine how that happens because there could be a different topic that we don't know about yet.
There you go. I like that idea. Thank you.
All right. So we have the motion on the floor, and I will go through a roll call vote for that. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Janda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Winger?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Thank you. That was a great discussion, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We are moving down. We have the personnel report that you've all been presented. Is there somebody that would like to make a motion to approve said personnel report?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel report.
Okay, that was moved by Chris Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
Yep.
That was seconded by?
Linda.
By Linda Alderman. Thank you. All right. We'll go through a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio? Yes. Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Janda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Winger?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. We are down to announcements. Mr. Robinson, did you have anything for us?
And we don't have anything really exciting. I would just highlight again for the community, their first day of school for all students is still expected to be Thursday, August 13th. And that we anticipate with whatever our delivery looks like, that we will continue to follow our school calendar as it was set, at least based on what we know at this time. So but other than that, no announcements from us tonight.
I just have. You have a question. Oh, sorry, Julie.
Go ahead, Linda.
A question was from the from members of the community, and that is that they, even if they don't have children in school, there are community members that would really like to know what's going on and 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 how all of this is progressing and what it is we decide. So do you see that happening on Facebook or?
Yeah, we we can ensure that as we put out communication to parents, that we're also putting it out on our Facebook page and on our website, just so that patrons in the community can track our progress and the decisions that are being made.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing. We are, we did not have any public comments tonight that came in before 7 o'clock. We do have a form that is online that folks can fill out to have their identification verified and then read during the public comment section. I think we had one that came in at 7:03, and that just didn't give us time to prepare. So please, if you do want to submit a public comment, we are happy to get those. If you have any questions, please reach out to the central office for how to do that, and we will also try to get that information out to the public on how to make that happen here in this virtual world that we are in. So.
Madam President?
Yes.
Hey, I would like to, one, thank all of our 290 administration, this board itself, all of our public leaders. This is not easy times, and we're all having to try to make decisions that that provoke equality for everyone, that we try to fit everyone's needs. And as we see tonight, it's it gets tough, and I just appreciate all the discussions that us as a board and a school district have. And I just want people to know we're trying to make the best decisions as we can, and they're not always the easiest decisions to make.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that, Chris. Appreciate it. And with that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.